I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone to the regular session of Goldendale City Council for August 17. First they will be roll call and I'll ask Connie Byers if she can do the roll call.
Andy?
Here.
Phil Berto?
Is what he said.
Okay, so Julie's here. Lauren?
Here.
Myland?
This is Myland, here.
Shannon?
Here.
Okay. That's it.
Okay. And we just need a motion to excuse Phil Entevedos. Do we have a motion?
So low.
And a second.
This is really on the--
I got you.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to excuse Phil Berto Entevedos from attending this council session. He's at work. All in favor? Uh-oh. Could-- Could those that are listening in on the meeting mute your phone?
Not listening. They muted?
Yeah, yeah, I think everybody heard it. We don't have a public hearing tonight, but under agenda I would like to propose an amendment to the agenda to add two additional presentations, one proclamation and the second, a COVID statement. Could we have a second for that amendment?
A first. A motion for a first.
This is Myland, I'll plug it in.
We needed a first first.
I'm sorry, we didn't get a motion first.
This is Myland, I saw who's--
Okay.
--have to. Lauren, I'll second that.
Thank you, Lauren. Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to amend the agenda for tonight's session to include two additional presentations. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. And with the agenda and the consent agenda approved, I'll begin the first of the presentations and it'll be a proclamation for a good, a very, very good member of the citizenship of Goldendale, Bruce Holcomb, who passed away. And I've-- proclamation has been prepared and would like to be presented at this time. I'll read the entire thing. Whereas Bruce Holcomb became an integral part of the Goldendale community in 1977, serving as a welcoming store owner and significant supporter of many. And whereas Bruce Holcomb has been kind and courteous to all who entered Holcomb Century Market, now known as Holcomb's Market. And whereas Bruce Holcomb was a caring and generous employer to many throughout the years. And whereas Bruce Holcomb demonstrated his support of Goldendale youth by volunteering and donating to the Clickatad County Fair and to Goldendale Schools, Athletics, and Activities. And whereas Bruce Holcomb was an avid participant in fantasy football with friends each fall. And whereas Bruce Holcomb was an active member of the Goldendale Golf Club for many years, enjoying sponsoring and cooking for the Century Open tournaments. And whereas the city of Goldendale remembers and honors Bruce Holcomb for his commitment and contributions to the community of Goldendale and Clickatad County and being proclaimed by my candidate as mayor on behalf of the Goldendale community, we do hereby declare that August 29th, this Saturday, August 29, 2020, to be Bruce Holcomb Day in the town of Goldendale, Washington. Thank you very much. The next item is a statement on the COVID situation that we're in. If you remember, at the last-- at the last council meeting, we had a lot of people that wanted to make public comments and we weren't able to let them in because of the rules that we had to work under. And because of the concern over that, it's not something that our city council was comfortable with, nor the people that were standing outside to be able to enter the council meeting. Justin Lee, a member of our city staff, researched the matter and did a risk assessment and his findings have been verified in this-- by the city's risk management representative from the Washington City's Insurance Authority, the WCIA. These are the points that Justin stated in his paper and this has been distributed to a number of people, city council included. And I think-- I'll go through the points of it because they're important to help people understand why we're in this situation of only five people in this entire council chamber. The primary source of the law that governs the form and function of city council meetings is the Washington Open Meetings Act, the OMPA, OPMA, excuse me, as codified in Chapter 43 of our RCWs. This law requires that all meetings of governing bodies of public agencies, including cities, be open to the public. The OPMA contains specific provisions with regard to regular and special meetings, executive sessions, the types of notice that must be given for meetings, the contact of-- conduct of meetings, and the penalties and remedies for any violations. In light of the current COVID-19 pandemic, on March 24, 2020, the governor and state legislator-- legislative leaders in a bipartisan proclamation, number 20-28, was agreed and this details several temporary waivers and prohibitions related to in-person meetings under the OPMA. The intent of the proclamation is to reduce unnecessary person-to-person contact to slow the spread of COVID-19. Just to insert-- we have had-- we're over 130 cases right now. It has jumped tremendously in the last few days. The next item. Agencies located within jurisdictions in Phase 1 and Phase 2, including the city of Goldendale, may only conduct meetings that can be attended remotely. In other words, these agencies must not provide a physical location for the public to attend meetings in person. The agencies-- the public may only be permitted to attend remotely and we provided Zoom numbers and help for them to be able to listen to this meeting. The interpretation of the governor's proclamation has been confirmed by the Attorney General and the Municipal Research and Services Center, MRSC, a nonprofit organization that provides legal and policy guidance to cities and the state of Washington. The city of Goldendale has complied with the governor's proclamation by arranging to remote-- by arranging for remote attendance by the public at meetings with a telephone conference call-in platform. In particular, we have made a concerted effort to ensure that all attendees are able to hear everything that transpires during city's council meetings. Under the OPMA, there are serious penalties for non-compliance. First and foremost, an action taken at a meeting held in violation of the OPMA is null and void. Anything we decide tonight, if we had more than five people here, would be null and void. It wouldn't count at all. Additionally, any member of the governing body who attends a meeting knowing that it violates the OPMA is subject to a potential penalty liability of $500 for the first violation and $1,000 for a subsequent violation. Moreover, should an agency or private party pursue a legal claim against a qualifying attendee, the penalty party-- the prevailing party, excuse me, the prevailing party may recoup expenses and attorney's fees, both of which can be substantial. By violating the governor's proclamation, the city risks a substantial degree of exposure to liability from a wide variety of sources, including the office of the Attorney General, local and state-- state-level public health authorities, the Department of Labor and Industries, and our own city's union employees and other contractors engaged by the city who perform work at City Hall. In summary, it is almost-- it is of utmost importance to the city that we adhere to the law, minimize exposure to liability, and be-- do our part to maintain the safety and well-being of our staff, elected officials, and members of the public. Now, on hand, listening to this reading of the research paper that was prepared by Justin Lee-- Justin is on the phone. If there are any questions from the council, particularly the difficult questions, the floor is open for discussion. If you have a question, just speak up and we'll try to keep it in order.
Mayor, this is Julie. I just want to thank Justin for his diligence and researchiness and encouraged with what he has decided. I think that's totally appropriate.
Thank you, Julie. If not, I'll go ahead and close the discussion. You have copies of this same research study that Justin Lee prepared and is both well-written and based on facts throughout. It's a very good job, Justin, and we appreciate it sincerely.
Thank you. Yep.
You bet. You bet. The next item is the one-- the presentation that we planned to hear here all along. And this is Dana Peck, the executive director. We'll update us on tourism dollars from the Goldendale Chamber of Commerce. Dana?
I appreciate the opportunity. The main points I was going to go over, as the mayor said, are the tourism dollar spending. Update on a new opportunity that I can't talk about a whole lot for the chamber, but we'll be giving you more information in the future. And also just a quick update on the global economy. No, not for too long. There's just a couple of points that seem to be really growing out of-- the growing interest in the area for people interested in relocating here by now. Basically, the chamber operates under a contract with the city. The city funds with what are called hotel motel tax dollars, which is an assessment on people who stay in motels or bed and breakfast in the immediate area. As part of that contract, the chamber opens and maintains a visitor information center, which as you know, we've got the art community in there as well and we're doing what we can to market and sell their products for them. We do web-based marketing in the area, which is really the plan of the downtown visitor information center. We find that at our current location, we get very few walk-ins from people passing through the area, but we think we're catching them as we look at the statistics on our web, the, you know, Goldendale Chamber. And it's not an entirely satisfactory situation. It'd be good to have face-to-face contact because at that point you can really get an idea what a person's interested in, maybe persuade them into staying longer and spending more, but that's our current situation. Couple other things that we do, we provide event management, marketing support. We were very involved in what was hopefully going to be the reopening of the observatory. We have a contract to reinvigorate the Humpard Garden Show, which would have gone into effect this year, but frankly, we're benefiting from the extra time since we were forced to cancel. It gives us more time to think, wow, what we're going to do next year. A July coordination with Kiwanis. Local business marketing coordination. Unfortunately, in 2020, it's been more pushing COVID updates out the door, trying to sort through the multiple sources of information and get them into some manageable-- push them out the door on web page and our emails. And then also support for nonprofits. The main thing I wanted to bring up tonight is, you know, although there isn't a specific-- oh yeah, for that-- for those services, we could pay $31,500, most of which goes into salaries and building maintenance, building operation, but also a chunk of it goes into supporting different events and especially on the marketing side. And that's the piece that I wanted to talk about most. And you know, this is some kind of an awkward way to do a presentation. If anybody's got any questions, just jump right in or more than happy to address stuff as we go along. But the main thing I wanted to say is, you know, we haven't had any of the events that we had hoped to market and that's left us, you know, with money that wasn't actually set aside for marketing those events, which would have probably totaled in the area of a couple thousand dollars. Most recently, the We Rock people, who really feel like we've tried to build a relationship with, you know, wanted us to do some regional promotion for them. And I just, you know, especially after all of this stuff you just heard about the city's obligations, I was afraid that it was going to lead to an event that, you know, the state rules weren't going to be enforced in a-- well, you couldn't enforce them with a larger group. And I had the unfortunate task of telling the voters that we just weren't going to be able to help them this year on the marketing of the event. And, you know, I think as you all know, motorsports are very central to what we're trying to promote, the Goldendale sports. And to have to back away from such an interesting and well-intended, normally, event was painful, but that-- I just-- you know, it was a judgment call and I just didn't see any way we could do it without running afoul of the state regs on this. Hopefully, a 2020, never again problem. What I'm proposing to the city, and I'll take this while we're having an events committee meeting, is that, you know, we have some opportunities to expand our outreach to tourists visiting the area. And we're also in the process of revamping the webpage. And I'd like to take those dollars, which, again, even though they're not spelled out in the contract, I think we all understood that it was in a couple thousand dollar range. And I'd like to plow those into expanded work on the website, get more of it done in 2020 than we might have. Or basically redo the whole thing. We've operated it long enough that we know what works and what needs to change. And we also have a kind of an alternative location that we think is going to be very successful for attracting people to Goldendale and retail outlets that are in the general area around here. You know, I didn't-- I didn't feel right, you know, treating that money like it was mine when there was other money, whether it was the chambers, you know, when there were other uses it was going to be targeted at. I think we can make a strong case for the alternative uses for it, but I wanted the council and ultimately the events committee to hear that and come to their own conclusions on it. Can I answer any questions about that?
Dana?
Yep.
I think probably we could put that under council business for the September 8 meeting unless it needs more urgent action and we could use--
Yeah.
--the presentation you've made. And the council have a chance to discuss it and give their permission--
Great.
I think your request is very sound, always is.
Well, I just-- you know, I don't want to-- technically, it's not reprogramming the money, but you know, actually it is in spirit anyway. And it just seems like it's a decision that's, you know, yours to make, not mine.
We'll have--
If we could do that on the 8th, that'd be great.
Yes, we'll have it worked out and on the agenda.
Okay. Well, on the local economy, is that okay to just spend a couple more minutes on that?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Well, the pump storage project, which is, you know, the biggest thing on the books statewide, not just locally, is really making great progress getting its federal license, which is what it's going to take. They're way ahead of schedule right now. And one of the things that would further strengthen the project actually getting built is there's a piece of legislation in the Congress right now that would extend tax credits, kind of like solar projects get to large storage projects. And the developers have asked if the city and county would be interested in sending a letter to the congressional delegation that would, you know, basically say, please support this legislation. It's really good for our community. And if the council's interested in that, I can get a draft letter to the mayor of Larry and see if it meets your needs. And is-- I'm not sure if silence means approval or disapproval, but if you don't mind, I'll bring you a draft letter to consider sending to the congressional delegation on that.
That's perfect.
Tax credits, okay.
We've-- the council and my office have supported pump storage from the very first chance we had to comment on it, both at the state and federal level and the county level. So we'll certainly be willing to support that.
Okay.
And I think we'll be able to have the consensus of the city council. It's a very positive thing for Goldendale.
You know, one of the things that I wanted to bring up is, you know, it's just remarkable how many houses are getting sold and houses are getting built. And I, you know, I think we're really seeing the advantages and to some extent the disadvantages of being close enough to a couple of major urban areas that people can potentially commute from here into the-- get out of what's going on in the urban areas. One of the things that could really control how that happens and accelerate it at the same time would be having the city take a look at some of the housing policy alternatives that, well, we see across the region that, you know, I mean, could have accomplished the two things I just mentioned, that, you know, it incentivizes developers to put houses where the city and its residents want them. And then it gives you something that you can market so you've got people coming into the city limits and, you know, benefiting not just the city tax base, but the operation of the water and sewer system by having more customers. And I don't have anything specific to offer. I think it's really worth the city council's time to think about how something like that might work because, you know, one of the-- one of the growth doesn't have to be a bad thing if you get ahead of it. And one of the ways you get ahead of it is by having some policies on the one hand, put some incentives on the other. You know, the developers are always going to be attracted to areas where, you know, a cost of a little less money than another area to put something in the ground. Again, there've been all kinds of different ways that's been approached by cities, but it would-- I just think it's probably time for the city to be given that some thought, if it's a fit where you'd like to see it go. Because it's clearly happening. It'd be better if it happened with a kind of a larger planning framework around it.
I agree.
That's about it.
Thank you very much, Dana.
Sure.
I think we have seen cities that did not plan for growth and it runs away from them and they can't control it. So we will be working with our land planning staff and with all that are connected to the policies for our city to work out something, to propose to city council to get their input and approval as well. And we hopefully will have this worked out by the 8th of September. I may be too ambitious on that, but we'll do it very, very quickly. But we need to--
Very quick.
--have those sound growth policies that will produce the type of community that people here would like.
Yep, that's the key. Well, thank you. Take a weird way to give a presentation, but appreciate your time.
Thank you, Dana. Fairly very much.
Hey, Dan, this is Shannon.
Hi.
This would-- this would-- I'm thinking this would probably be a really good time to promote Goldendale to somebody's bigger cities.
Oh, yeah.
Businesses that are wanting to get out right now that might want to come to Goldendale.
Yep, that's-- that's-- that's the kind of thing I'm talking about using this event money for, actually. It's just, you know, clearly we-- we're starting to be discovered, but you can accelerate and control that process if you get the message right. You know, and frankly, you know, the biggest problem really for business recruitment over the years has been workforce. You know, if-- if somebody who's established wanted to move here, if a big chunk of their workforce didn't want to move with them, we didn't have anything to offer them when they got here, when it came to workforce. Well, you know, now the workforce is leaving before the business. You know, but we've kind of-- the two big recruitment problems we traditionally had here have sort of been solved by themselves. I mean, you've got people wanting to get their kids into a more stable environment on the worker side, and you've got businesses just wanting to get the hell out of the place on the business owner's side. I think you're exactly right, Shannon. I think-- I think we got a real marketable message on both points. So one of the reasons I brought up the housing stuff.
Anyone else with a comment or question for Dana? If not, we'll plan on meeting with Dana during this week to discuss this and lay out a plan to bring to the council.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Dana, very much. That ends the presentations for this council session. I think it sets a record. The next item are department reports and we're very pleased to have not only Police Chief Reggie Bartowski, but also interim police chief Jay Hunziker, both here at the meeting. And we'll get a report from Reggie and any comments as well or questions that you want for Jay, please feel free to do so. Reggie?
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council. So this will be my last council meeting for the city of Goldendale. So for five years, I've been coming to council meetings and I'm sad to say this again will be my last one. I am very thankful, though, for all of the cards and the phone calls and the gifts that I've been receiving from citizens and businesses and other law enforcement agencies. I'm extremely grateful and thankful for all of them. But as the mayor said, I'm very happy to say that we do have interim chief Jay Hunziker here tonight that will be starting September 1st. Jay and I have been doing a lot of work over the past couple of weeks to prepare the police department for a seamless transfer for him. We've been covering a lot of different areas, including civil service files. We've been going over the budget, current investigations that are happening, our-- going over the budget, current investigations that are happening, our impress fund, our drug investigation fund, really hitting a lot of the trainings that we've been trying to accomplish. He's been attending all of the meetings, with other law enforcement, with the schools and businesses. We've been talking about equipment, so we've really covered a lot of different areas that, to make this a painless of a transfer as we can. I've told Jay that, again, I'm going to be completely available for anything that he might need, especially for the month of September, but from then on, if he needs anything. And I just want to say, I think this was definitely the right choice, and I have all the confidence in the world in Jay Hunsaker for doing this position, and I'm very excited for the direction that the Goldendale Police Department is currently going. And Mayor, that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. Any questions or any comments? Jay, would you have anything you want to say as well?
No, I'm just very excited to have the opportunity to take on this position. Like I said, I've been working, like the chief said, I've been working with him. I have the same direction goal that the chief has been taking, and I think the Goldendale Police Department is on a very good path, and I have full intentions of keeping it on that path, and I'm going to do my best to do a good job for the city of Goldendale and its citizens.
We know you will. Any comments or questions from city council? If not, we'll go to the next item.
This is Shannon.
Okay, sorry.
I just wanted to say good luck, Reggie, and just remember if you need anything, Jay, don't be afraid to come to the council, we're here to support you.
Well, thank you very much, and I will, I mean, I can't do this on my own, and I'm very thankful for the support that I'm getting from the mayor on down, council, all the officers, Chief Reggie Bartowski, so thank you very much, and if I do have a question, I'm definitely going to ask it.
Any other council members? If not, I wanted to just say a couple of things on our police department. Whenever you're about to make a big change, you need to have an awful lot of preparation done, and over the years Reggie has constantly taught and trained our police department so they are well-prepared to continue the work they've done in the past, and he's made this change and to Jay Hunsaker very smooth and very, very effective, and we're looking very much forward to Jay's service to the officers and to the city. And while we hate to see Reggie go, there's probably a hurricane waiting for him out there somewhere. But anyway, I don't have bad wishes, I really, really have loved working with Reggie, but there are hurricanes in Florida. If there aren't further comments, we'll go on to council business. We have a council member appointment, we had, in your package you have the, all of the aspects for our selection of a new council member to replace Jane, who was here previously and has gone on to move into another community, and we have really, really enjoyed her contribution here, and the person who has applied, we advertised for a couple of weeks in newspapers as required, and with that, we only had one applicant, and he was the first person to apply a number of weeks before we actually finished the process. We don't have him here to where you can see him on camera, unfortunately, but we're going to introduce Kevin Feloc, and he's going to have to tell us and give us some grammar lessons on his name. It's F E L O C K, and Kevin comes very well qualified through his resume, he has quite an outstanding qualification to serve our city and a real desire to do so, and it seems like involvement in the city and contributions to the city are particularly important thing for a city like Goldendale. Now, the normal way that we go through this process is to, we're supposed to gather the council chamber, well, we've got you all gathered on the phone, and there'll be questions asked, and Connie Byers and I talked about what would make it the easiest way to give the questions to Kevin. Kevin's on the line, you're on the line, and I think if I read the questions, Kevin can answer them, and if you have additional comments or questions, you can certainly join in, but I think it'll be easier to work through the questions for the council. If everybody's in agreement with that approach, then we'll go ahead. We only have one candidate, so we will submit the questions to Kevin, he'll give us his answers, and any other discussion that follows, and then we'll be looking for you to vote up or down, to approve Kevin or to not approve. With that, I'm going to begin the questioning. Kevin, are you on the line?
Sir, yes, sir.
Thank you very much. First, could you briefly describe your educational background, your work experience, and community service activities?
Well, I spent 20 years in the Navy. After retiring from the Navy, I took advantage of the GI Bill, and I studied environmental science and earned a bachelor's of science degree, which I then used to work at John Day Dam as the environmental guy. I had to leave that job because of a family emergency, which saddened me, I loved the people at John Day, they were wonderful, it was a wonderful job, but in the times that I've spent here, I have loved this community, and I just want to see what I can give back.
Thank you, Kevin. The next question, why are you interested in serving on the council and what do you hope to accomplish?
Well, it's kind of a follow-up on the last one. Over the last few years, I have fallen in love with this community and the people in it, and what I have learned is these are intelligent, hard-working people who want to see their neighbors, their children, and themselves prosper, and I'd like to see what I could do to help. I hope I can help.
That's excellent, thank you. Do you have a particular vision for Goldendale?
That's kind of a tricky one, because I do know the people here in this community, you have people that don't want to see it grow too fast, you have people that want to see it grow real fast. Like, I think there might be ways to both grow the community and keep the soul of the community at the same time, without turning this into the next, I don't know, Vancouver. So I guess my vision is to grow the community but keep everybody in mind as we do it.
That's an excellent reply. We'll be working, the council, on these policies for growth and development in Goldendale, and we're going to really, really appreciate your input and experience in those discussions. I have one other question. What are the two highest-
Yes, sir.
Excuse me, go ahead.
No, I said, yes, sir, that's all I said.
Okay, thanks, Kevin.
Yes.
What are the two highest priorities or issues that you believe the city needs to address? We've talked a little bit about growth already, are there other things that you see as priorities?
Well, obviously, yes, growth of the community, but without infringing on the soul of the community, but I do worry, you know, I do go downtown, I do know we have a mess problem, I do know we have a heroin problem, and I do know we have a poverty problem, but I think if we grow the community and we use grants from the federal government to assist us both in education and in programs, we can kind of combat that.
I think that's a good approach. Any comments from the council? I have one other, that's the name, we've talked about economic growth, you've talked about it as well as development, so we don't need to repeat that question, but for the council, do you have questions for Kevin? And in a moment, I'll ask Kevin if you have questions for the council. Council members, could you let us know if you have any questions? I wish I could see you.
I wish I could see you all, too. Kevin, this is Andy Holm, just question, how long do you think you've lived in Goldendale?
I've been here for just under three years.
Okay, thank you.
I think everybody has the resume that Kevin prepared as well as the answers he's given tonight. If there's further comments or questions, please speak up right now, and then we'll see what Kevin might have as questions for the council. Kevin, would you like to go ahead and, if you have a question for the council, let us know what it might be?
I don't really have any questions, because I do pay attention, and I have made these phone calls before, and I just sit quietly and listen, so I kind of know what the city council's doing for the last couple of months, but I would like to add to the comment that I just said, yes, I have only been in Goldendale for three and a half years, or three years-ish, but I did spend 20 years in the Navy, and it's hard to live in one place when you're in the Navy. I don't, it's hard to call something your home, and I've declared this place my home.
Good way to handle it, too.
Yep.
I'm going to call Larry Bellamy, who's listening in, to see how we carry out, since we only have one applicant, how do we work out for the council to approve or disapprove?
So really, can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Okay, so really, the best way to do it is like you had mentioned earlier, Mike, it's kind of an up-and-down vote, and so it just would require a motion from the council, and a second to the majority of the council members to vote in favor of-
Very good.
In favor of Kevin.
Thank you, Larry. Counsel, do we have a motion? Is that his dog?
That's his dog.
This is Lauren, I'll make a motion to appoint Kevin to the city council.
Do we have a second?
This is Andy, and I will second that.
Thank you very much. All in favor? Please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Kevin, you're now a member of Goldendale City Council, and we're proud to have you.
How does he say his last name?
Thank you, y'all.
How do you say your last name?
You're required to tell us exactly how to say your last name.
It's German, it's pronounced Feiok.
Feiok, okay.
Yes, but after 20 years in the military, it doesn't really matter what you call me, I'll answer to it.
That's great. We look forward to, all of us, to meeting you in person and working with you. We really are happy to have you on board. That's a Navy term.
Yes, thank you.
The next item is a resolution on the abatement order, and I'm asking Larry Bellamy if he will present that.
Okay, we have a couple of buildings and our accumulation of materials on a couple of blocks that are ready, they've received the court order that we need to go in and abate the property, and this is a resolution just to indicate that the council is aware that we have the court order to go in and clean up the nuisance that incurred on these two addresses, and to abate the nuisance, charge, charge the cost off, and the lien against the property, it would act like a property tax lien, and be collectible and proposed upon within a three-year period of time. And we are ready, so the next steps would include going out to bid and gathering the necessary funding to make it happen, and this resolution will continue this in that process.
Thank you, Larry. Thank you. Do we have a motion from the council? Or questions, comments?
I move to adopt Resolution 710, declaring a violation of GMC 8.45 authorizing city action to abate the nuisance and to charge all of the city's direct and indirect costs of the abatement action against the property owners, or owners which may be collected in the same manner as any other lawful debt and recorded at a lien on the abated property.
This is Marlon, I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. To adopt Resolution 710, declaring a violation of GMC 8.45 authorizing city action to abate the nuisance and to charge all of the city's direct and indirect costs of the abatement action against the property owners, which may be collected in the same manner as any other lawful debt and recorded at a lien, as a lien on the abated property. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you very much. That concludes the resolution part of the agenda. We'll go now to report of officers and city administrator, and we'll begin with Larry Bellamy, our city administrator, and his dog.
Yeah, I think, I think she's gone out of the room now. Anyway, I wanted to confirm what Dana was saying, what Dana was saying about people wanting to move to Goldendale, we are getting an uptick in requests for building permits and an uptick in requests for installation of water meters that are serviced by the city of Goldendale, and there have been a couple of water meter hookups of late that include some of those outside services that we have approved over the last year, year and a half. So we are, we are getting more inquiries and requests for developments of properties, so I think it's timely, timely to start thinking about our subdivision rules and what we require as far as investment and development costs for the infrastructure improvements. So the other thing I wanted to mention, too, was to give kudos to the public works group about their efforts to get the city cleaned up after that windstorm we had on Sunday night, and they were right out there first thing, clearing out the tree dens and things like that that have, that were blown out onto the roadways, we got the sweeper out, so they really reacted quickly and got things hopefully back into normal. I also wanted to report that we often, due to the high winds and the high temperatures, the Department of Natural Resources has pre-positioned a helicopter capable of dumping water on any fires that are in the area, it's supported by a 1,500 gallon single axle fuel truck with a light transfer van, and we have them pre-positioned up at the Goldendale Municipal Airport, so, and we've gone up there, the mayor and I went up there and greeted them on the day of a Saturday, and they are doing their job, waiting for what hopefully will never happen, but it's kind of nice to know that we do have some thoughts- But it's kind of nice to know that we do have some talks going into pre-positioning firefighting equipments here and near Goldendale. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Larry, very much. Now, for City Council, anyone that wishes to share information or comments, this is the time to do it.
Mayor, this is Andy Holm.
Thank you.
First thing I'd like to say is thank you for the proclamation for Bruce Holtham. I know that he has affected many people in Goldendale, and I was fortunate enough to work for the store for 12 out of 14 years, and he was an incredible boss to have. So it's a really nice way to honor Bruce here in Goldendale. There was something else, and I won't forget what it was now. But that's, thank you for that.
Thank you. Kind remarks to anyone else, City Council.
Yes, Mayor, this is Mylan. Larry, I also wanted to comment. I went out to the airport, and I talked to the DNR staff, and yes, they seem to be very pleased to be in there, and they said they're going to continue staying there. Yeah, they'll be using our airport whenever they come in. Now, one thing I was going to mention, Larry, that if there's a chance, because they're going to be leaving tomorrow with the helicopter, but there's a chance that maybe we can kind of mow some of that grass and weeds down for their station. Who knows? They may be coming back again here before the next month or so.
Yes, Mylan, I know it's the same thing, and I was going to put that on the public works list of to-do items to do next week.
Okay, good. Super.
Thank you.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other City Council members?
Mayor, Julie. Mayor, Julie, yes. I just wanted to welcome Kevin to the Goldendale City Council. I've also only been in the city for three years, so I am with you on this new adventure. I'd like to congratulate Sergeant Tom Trigger, who is qualified to chair a place change. Well-deserved honor, and I'm sure he will do well. I also want to remind the city that COVID is still here in our county. We're up to 172 cases as of this afternoon. Granted, a lot of them are on the website in Mount Adams Orchard, but it's still there in our county. So please take the appropriate actions to take care of yourself and your neighbors. And that's all I have, Senator.
Thank you, Julie.
Thank you. Thank you.
Lauren, did you have a comment or a question?
I don't have any questions, but I guess I'd like to comment on the work to maybe incentivize some development, incentivize growth in Goldendale, and maybe update some of the planning or the growth documents. And I just, maybe we should get a subhumane of the council members to work with staff on that so that as those policies are developed for city council review, there's some input from city council in the development process as well.
Exactly. We always want that. That's the very best part. Thank you, Lauren. Any other comment?
Mayor, this is Andy again. I can't remember what it was now. Two things, and Julie already hit it, but welcome Kevin to city council, and congratulations on Jay for his term of free chief. I know you'll do a great job, and thanks for that, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Andy. Very kind.
So, Mayor, this is Shannon. I want to say welcome to Kevin and welcome to Jay. I know Jay will do a good job. He's got a lot of experience. When we talk about the COVID cases, when we say 172 cases, that's how many we had from the beginning, correct? Not how many active cases we have, like?
That's correct. Right now, I believe we have around 30 active cases.
Makes it all the more important to follow our instructions.
I just think, I think people always want to hear the amount of active cases is what I think a lot of people are interested in.
It's important. We haven't had an increase in the deaths, and we have quite a large number who have recovered. So it's, even though it's kind of daunting how many are active right now, we're making good progress. Any other comments from the council? I think I've asked everybody that's here, and thank you all for speaking up. I just want to make one brief remark about the importance of DNR's presence at the airport. When we started working to update our airport and improve it and add some safety features to it, some of the comments came back, well, not everybody has an airplane, and of course they don't. But everyone has an interest in fire protection, and DNR's presence and their support. And we talked about that we want to do whatever we can to help them be here and be well-prepared to fight forest fires, wildfires, anything that would come into DNR's purview would help us to be a safer community and would benefit everyone in this town. That's all I had to say, but I'm very, very much in favor of the steps that DNR has taken. Very, very positive. We're open now for public comment, and those who are listening, if you have a public comment, make sure you push your mute button so you can be heard.
And state your name and address.
Do we need your name and address? Anybody wish to speak?
Mayor, this is Roger Nicholas calling from the DOWLS.
Yes.
Yeah, and I just wanted to get an update on the report on the airport. What progress have we been making in terms of getting fuel stations set up there?
We've been making steady progress, going through all the different steps that it takes to get a project like this done in Washington State. I think we're on the two last steps. One of them is the archaeology study, and I think there's one other one, and Larry, probably, he works closer with this, but we're very nearly there. The tank will be ordered, and we'll be able to meet the deadline that occurs in 2021. So we're.
Right. Thank you. It's great news.
Yeah, we think it's very important, and I talked to DNR about the fact that even spotter planes will be able to use this airport if they need to. And every bit of it is to help protect us.
Thank you. Excellent.
Thank you, Roger. Appreciate your comment, too. Any others for public comment? I have a comment to the public. I sincerely appreciate how you've made the message that you would like to be in these meetings, real meetings. You've been patient about it. You've been very constructive, very helpful, and very understanding, and I sincerely appreciate that you've done a lot of real good for Goldendale just by letting people see your example of wanting to be involved, and we will make sure when we can open this meeting up that you will be the first ones notified of it. Thank you very, very much. You've done a great job. Are there other public comments to be made? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and call for a motion to adjourn city council.
So moved.
This is Andy. I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn city council meeting for August 17, 2020. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all. This is, I know a difficult process, but we really appreciate your cooperation. Thank you. We'll see you on September 8.